All right, let's, uh, let's go ahead and begin. So I'll welcome everybody and say good evening to you. Thank you for joining us this evening for this workshop. This is a meeting of the Pingree Grove Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Chris Book and I'm the appointed chairperson of this public body. In accordance with Public Act 101-645 ILCS 120-7. Some, uh, this Pingree Grove Planning and Zoning Commission is being held remotely based on the gubernatorial disaster declaration pertaining to COVID-19. And Chairperson of this public body has determined that a full in-person meeting is not practical or prudent at this time. The commissioner's staff and I are participating in tonight's meeting from different locations and we're using the Zoom platform, a video conferencing platform. Members of the public have the opportunity to see and hear the full discussion by watching a live stream on the village's YouTube channel or by joining this Zoom meeting by following the instructions printed in tonight's agenda. The agenda for tonight's meeting was properly posted during daytime hours on Thursday, June 3rd, 2021, and provides information necessary for the public to join the Zoom meeting remotely by computer or by telephone. Public comments were also accepted in advance by voicemail and at the email address comment@pingreegrove.org as was specified in the agenda. Village staff who will be also on this tonight, I know that Village Manager Jeff Cook is there and the new village clerk Stephen Gray is also attending, I think possibly some others and they may show up later as called upon to speak, but at this time, Stephen, would you mind calling the roll and we'll log everybody who is attending here from the commission?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the roll now. Commissioner Eckert?
Here.
Commissioner Grant?
Here.
Commissioner Sutton? Leave your on mute, Commissioner Sutton? Still on mute? Okay. Think that's okay. Commissioners, uh, Schlesman?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Sally?
Here.
And Chairperson Book?
I'm here.
All right, Commissioner S. Carl?
Thank you. So let's go ahead and proceed. We've got a lot of information to cover this evening. In fact, before we get started, we're going to go a little bit over some of the procedures for tonight. There's really only one item on the agenda concerning the annexation, rezoning, and development of property. And tonight's meeting is a workshop meeting. It's going to serve as an opportunity for the commissioners to learn about the proposed plan, to ask questions and offer input on the proposal. No action is camped, is camped contemplated this evening and the public should be aware the commission is required to conduct an actual public hearing prior to making its advisory recommendations to the village. And the public hearing date is not yet scheduled and requires 15 days advance public notice prior to the hearing date. Discussion will begin this evening with a staff report delivered by the village manager, manager Jeff Cook. The commission will then permit the applicant to make a brief presentation. Following this, the commission will begin their discussion of matters pertaining to this and could include questions asked of the staff or the applicant. And upon the conclusion of the discussion, the commission will then move on to the public comment portion of this meeting. And as a reminder, the public comment portion of tonight's meeting is general in nature and is not part of the public hearing process, but all comments received by phone message or email prior to the meeting will be read aloud. And after reading those comments for the record, I will ask if there are any public comments from those who have joined this meeting remotely. Public participants who wish to speak will need to raise their hand, quote unquote, by, by clicking on the Zoom platform's raise hand feature. And if you're dialing in by phone, you'll raise your hand by pressing the star nine on your handset. Audience members will be called upon and provided time to make their comments. And please be aware that you may need to unmute yourself after you're being called upon to speak. Also, after you speak, your microphone access will be muted once again. And there could be some delay between the time that you've become unmuted and you're being able to speak. So why don't you just delay for a few seconds before actually beginning to speak? And we would ask that everyone who will be speaking publicly this evening identify themselves by name so that the written minutes can be prepared for this meeting. All right, uh, we'll now proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance and I believe Manager Cook has a image that he can share with us. We'll, we'll begin by reciting the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, for God.
Yeah. It's all
Thank you. The next item that we're going to go through quickly is approving the minutes from our last planning and zoning commission meeting. They were published as part of the agenda. Um, I would ask for a motion that they be approved.
A motion they be approved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
I apologize. Uh, Commissioner Grant at the second, who made the motion?
Rich Eckert. Rich Eckert did.
Thank you.
Well, Stephen, would you please call the roll on that then? Thank you.
Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlesman? Commissioner, I believe you're on mute.
Yeah. Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Selly?
Yes.
Commissioner Eckert?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Chairperson Book?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries.
All right, thank you. So now we're going to get into the meat of our meeting purpose this evening and the beginning of this workshop. I'd like to ask Village Manager Cook to lead off. But also before doing that, thank the staff who has spent a lot of time reviewing the information that was provided by the applicant. There's a lot of detail, a lot of information. So they've done a great job in reviewing things and providing the commissioners with, with this background information. So, uh, Manager Cook, please lead us on the way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to keep my report somewhat brief here. As you mentioned, there's a rather lengthy staff report that's been made available to the commissioners as well as the general public through publication with the agenda packet. So those who've opted to read through that have had access to that information. The developer has also had access to that information. You know, perhaps they'll have something to add that will answer some of those points that were raised in the staff report, but for the benefit of the public who may be in attendance, we have several members of the public that have joined this webinar for as attendees. And, and one procedural thing I do want to mention, Chairman, we've experienced some technical difficulties getting the live feed going on YouTube. But I do want you to know that we are recording, making a recording of this meeting here as required under the Open Meetings Act. And after the conclusion, when we're able to download it, we will upload that to YouTube. So it does, it does appear that the live functions, for whatever reason, we are experiencing technical difficulties there. So it's unfortunate, but we will have this up to for viewing at a later time. So back to the staff report, what we have this evening, as you mentioned, is a workshop session. Essentially, this is an opportunity for the commission to be introduced and begin, uh, you know, some commentary and interaction and questions back and forth with the developer. And attempt to find, uh, the critical path areas that would ultimately result in this commission finding a request favorable or not favorable. Tonight, uh, we have a proposed residential development by D.R. Horton of approximately 286 acres located generally north of the Carolin neighborhood, bounded roughly by the unimproved Rankin Road and Big Timber Road to the north. The requests that will be coming before the commission and ultimately the village board for action include rezoning upon annexation to R1, R5, PUD. And that's a zoning classification that the majority of the residential homes in the village are currently classified. The developer would also request a special use permit for planned unit development as well as conceptual planned unit development plan approval. That essentially sets forth the concept approval of what can happen. Then the developer's engineering and design team proceeds forward with very detailed construction documents to define things like grading, stormwater management, wetland buffering, the details of such street slopes, sidewalk slopes, you name it, it's in there. They don't typically get into that level of detail until they have conceptual plan approval. So then, once they have finalized that with engineering, they request preliminary and final plat approvals, which are the actual documents filed with the county that end up creating the lots that you build a home on and ultimately purchase to occupy typically. As I mentioned before, the Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board, advisory body to the village board. They will be holding a public hearing regarding zoning matters in the future. But the village board is the ultimate authority on this. And whatever this commission, the action it takes and the recommendations it makes will be taken under advisement by the board for final action at a future date. In summary, if we get into some of the details, this, this property was planned for future residential use. And, uh, the, the proposal is generally consistent with the village's 2015 comprehensive plan that called for roadways in, in the vicinity here, residential use of this land. With some minor, uh, areas of difference where there was a thought that perhaps industrial uses might be marketable up on Big Timber Road someday in the future. So there's a small amount of variance there. But those, those plans are again general in nature and not controlling. You may remember back in January, there was a presentation that D.R. Horton made to the village board for a smaller piece of land. And at that meeting in January, some of the principal issues that the village was discussing was trying to get a second point of access to this development because there's a good number of homes there that were taking primary or only access at the time from Rankin Road. In addition to that, there was a lot of discussion about the balance of single family versus attached units. Those are some principal issues that were discussed in January and this plan addresses that by adding in an additional 80 acres of development referred to as the Vinci property. And that's, that's a rectangular piece that runs adjacent to Big Timber Road. And with the addition of that acreage to the property or to the land plan allows for the north extension of a roadway to provide that second point of, of access or relief. Additionally, they've reduced the balance of townhomes from 65% down to 55.7% of the total units proposed, which now total 1,007. Another area that was new on this plan is the small lot, single-family residential neighborhoods 35 and 36 on the plan, if you've taken a look at that. And this is somewhat of a unique cutting edge type of a thing that they're looking at. It's a rental community of single-family homes that looks to be owned and operated by some type of an institutional investor. It's being done certainly in, in or near Pensacola, Florida that I'm aware of. Uh, and recently, just earlier today, in fact, I saw a Wall Street Journal article on the subject. So it's, it's a something that's out there that's happening. Certainly interested to hear more about it. You know, there's a lot of concerns that I've heard expressed certainly about the maintenance of those areas and what assurances there may be that, uh, that operation continues in, in a fashion that protects property values. Uh, but I, I'm sure they are, development team was going to speak to that today. Dimensional standards that are proposed are largely in line with the existing development that has occurred in Pingree Grove. And, uh, one of the things that was agreed to through the staff discussions was to make sure that that roadway access to Big Timber Road would be dedicated, you know, the land would be provided to the village for roadway purposes in phase one. The design engineering for that road would occur in phase one. And progress permit applications and such pursued in earnest for the, the flood crossing, the bridge crossing, all the environmental studies that would need to be done to be able to promote the realization of that as well as financial security for ensuring that road in phase one. Those things are all upfront. The time that the permitting process will take is pushing the actual construction to phase two. What we wanted to make sure was secure that it was going to happen. We didn't want to be in a situation where it's part of the plan and then something, you know, doesn't work out. And, and so that's been agreed to by the developer. The concept plan also indicates an area of tree preservation, uh, which is basically in the northwest corner of the Carolin, or it's, it's adjacent to the northwest corner of the Carolin development. There's some impact from roads and such in a similar fashion that Carolin impacted some of the trees that were there. Uh, and there's opportunities in, uh, some of the neighborhoods to take a look at some of the more specific locations of trees and potentially integrate tree preservation in the neighborhood. That's always a function of grading and right at this time, we don't have enough information to really say what is or is not possible there. But certainly an item of concern as part of the PUD as well. There's there's certain standards that get proposed, which are the setbacks and lot sizes and so on and so forth. And they propose to improve some of the open space to a level that would not normally be required by the village code. However, if you look around the village, the village has a standard established of walking trails and open space improvements and, uh, these, uh, you know, pocket parks and items like that throughout, uh, landscape berms, some, some really beautiful areas. And, uh, those are typically things that are above and beyond what the code requires. And this, this plan proposes to do just that. Uh, there's a central park that proposes a pool, uh, an in-ground pool for the community. And, uh, certain other outdoor areas, there's a fair amount of detailed discussion in the staff report on, on some of the finer points there, but that's a major amenity in the central area of the, of the plan. The East Park, uh, is an area off of Big Timber Road that contemplates doing some type of outdoor field usage, uh, currently shown as soccer and volleyball. Uh, again, discussion points and details on that issue is it's only accessible by, by vehicle right now as proposed. There's a bocce ball feature, uh, which is a nice outdoor area overlooking the, uh, flood plain and wetland area where there's a large hill on this property. Couple pocket parks, uh, for the neighborhood. A few features, four of them, uh, not having really detailed at this time, but they're on the plan. I identified as something that would be done. Three or four walking path areas too that have some length to them that would be a nice community assets comparable to what we see in town. Uh, there's landscape buffers also, uh, proposed along the main roadways as well as a 45 foot wide area between the proposed age targeted neighborhood A15 and the existing Carolin neighborhood. Developers also been working with the staff to address, uh, the park and school requirements for this development. And I, I, you know, there's still a lot of discussion going on on that. That typically takes shape through the annexation agreement, but there's been, uh, recent progress in that area to address those items. And then finally, that, you know, not to belabor this, the, my report then concludes with a series of items to kind of help guide the discussion tonight. Some of it getting into the real details there. Uh, but we do have, uh, D.R. Horton representatives with us here this evening on the screen. Like I said, they've had access to the report, just like the public. And I'd like to turn it over to them to hear a little bit about their revised, uh, development proposal. And, uh, perhaps they might be able to address some of those, uh, items that have come up as topics of discussion. I'm going to have to share my screen for the, the presentation they've prepared is, uh, again, technical items are interfering with some of our capabilities here. But, um, Chris, do you want to introduce yourself? Are you leading or is somebody else leading the discussion?
I'm sorry, are you referring to me or the D.R. Horton person?
Chris Lester.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I think you introduced me for me. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, actually, for the first part, I think we're going to have to do a quick presentation and I think Rich Olson from Gary Weber and Associates is going to leave that. Rich, are you, are you on with us?
Chris, this is Bruce Mellon. I, I think Rich is on, unfortunately, he's in the attendees and not as a panelist. Uh, Jeff, if there's any way we can make him a panelist, that would be, uh, that'd be terrific.
Yeah, I've got one person signed in as Rich. Um, we're going to assume that's the Rich we're looking to promote. I guess we're going to find out here.
No, in the, in the attendees, there's a DRH, Rich Olson.
Rich set up, uh, Jeff, I would just want to touch on, thank you for that report going through it. As you touched on, we've been working on this for a while, both, both with staff and through previous presentations to the board, which we'll touch on in our presentation. Appreciate your time on it and appreciate everybody's help at the village getting us to this point. We're excited to continue on. We think we've got a new plan that we presented here that's, you know, that next evolution, that next step forward for Pingree Grove, continuing to build on what we've done here in the past together and then what we're going to do in the future. So, uh, appreciate all, everybody's help getting us to this point and then getting ready to move on to that next step. So, did we get Rich set up?
Can you guys hear me?
There you are.
Awesome. Thanks for, uh, thanks for getting me on here. I came in a different direction, but, uh, but I guess I'm here. First of all, my name is Rich Olson. I'm with Gary R. Weber Associates. Uh, we're landscape architecture land planning firm. And, uh, we prepared the concept plan for your consideration tonight. Is the plan going to be up somewhere so I can talk to? Or can I share it? Can I share my screen?
I think Jeff needs to share his screen and he's working on that right now.
Yes, I'm going to have it up just in a minute here. If you could just let me know when you'd like me to advance the slides, please.
Oh, that'd be great. Thanks. So if you could, uh, advance the slide to the context map, which is a couple of slides in. And, uh, first of all, I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to, uh, to come before you and to, to talk about our plan and hopefully get some positive feedback here. I just lost it. Did you? I can't see the plane anymore.
Sorry, give me, give me just a second here. Something's Adobe Acrobat was giving me a problem. Okay, I think I've got it now.
Great. If you can just move to the third slide. So a, as you guys are aware, the, the site is, uh, generally north of Ranking Road and south of Big Timber Road. Uh, the Rutland Forest Reserve is off to the east, Carolin is to the south, and we have King County Farming uh, off to the west. Uh, and the site is currently being farmed. If you move to the next slide? So what, uh, what this slide is, is it's the surrounding zoning to the site. And what's, uh, what we have here is off to the, the east, you have the forest preserve, you have the R1, R5, C1, PUD to the south, which is Carolin. And you have King County Farming in that, in that green hatch off to the, uh, west and to the north. If you could continue the next slide. So what I, I did here is I just took a little, a couple of little snippets from the October 19, 2015 comprehensive plan. And on the left side, you've got the Pingree Grove Transportation Plan. Um, and what it's, what it's really showing here is a connection from Ra, Ranking Road all the way up to Bing, Big Timber Road. And that's important from a planning standpoint, and that gives us direction on how we can, uh, develop this site. As well as to the right, you've got the Pingree Grove Residential Land Use Framework Plan. And this framework plan calls out for traditional neighborhood development. And that's in that green hash that you see there. So these two things are basic principles that we started to follow as we move forward with the plan. Could you advance the next slide? So here we've got the, uh, the concept plan and the plan itself features a, a variety of housing types linked together with open space pedestrian pathways and recreational, uh, features. What you see off of, uh, we, we are proposing a mix of traditional, both traditional housing as well as age targeted housing. Uh, as you come off of Ranking Road, that's our main entrance feature to the south there. And that spine road comes up through the center of the site and terminates into a central green space. And all the development to the east of that is our age targeted housing, which is a mix of 96 ranch quads and 142 single-family, uh, houses. Everything to the left and to the north of the spine road is a combination of our traditional housing, which is a mix of 465 townhomes and 304 single-family homes. And this plan really, uh, and I'll go into a little bit more detail, uh, really carries on a lot of the themes and concepts that you saw from, from the original Cambridge Lakes with individual neighborhood that, uh, are on attractively landscaped spine roads. So the spine road that you see really helps to create and form those individual neighborhoods that you see throughout the community. And that really helps to give us definition. It helps us to get to certain places on the plan easily. And from a vehicular standpoint, is, is a really nice amenity that, uh, that we're proposing. If you go to the next slide? So this is, this, just for historical context, I thought I would put this up just to give you an idea of where we came from. We have been working on this piece of property for well over a year now. And this is just one of the few plans that we, that we, that we have put forth. This is the July 2020 concept plan. And it really, if you look at it, it had, we have evolved in many, many ways from this plan. First of all, you'll notice that we have nothing north of Ekin, Ekin Creek. So everything on this plan is south. Well, one of the comments and one of the, the, the objectives is from the, the transportation plan is to connect to the north and, uh, to Big Timber Road. And this plan does not do that. There's a couple of other things, but I'll just, for context purposes, I just wanted to show this to you. There's also not much diversity of housing on this plan and a, and a couple of other basic features. If you could go to the next slide. So what, what I have here is our, our, our plan, and I just want to point out a couple of the benefits of, of this plan. We have a collector road that distinctly goes from Ranking Road all the way up through the site to Big Timber Road. As was mentioned, we also on this plan, we have decreased the percentage of townhomes on this, uh, uh, site. We have also increased the diversity of housing types for what I'd like to say is, is really a more balanced plan. We're also created a central park with a pool, which I'll, I'll, I'll touch on later, but that really serves as a really nice central feature to the entire plan. Uh, we have, we have, uh, we're proposing approximately four miles of new walking and bike trails. We have a twenty-seven acre sports park up in the northeast corner of the developments. And we've got a lot of open space. We have over a hundred and seventeen acres of open space, which is about forty-one percent, uh, of, of the site itself. If you, if you look at the plan from a, from an open space standpoint, a lot of the lots that you see directly open up to, um, open space or common areas that will be maintained by the HOA. And really lead to, uh, lots of amenities throughout the site, and I'll get into that in a little bit here. If you go to the next slide. So just to touch base really on the, the open space, which I think is, is really important because we've, we've really thought through how and where those open spaces are and how they connect all of the, the residents of this community. I've highlighted in green that you got the central park and that park has pathways and, and, and street connections for the pedestrians that will, will link them all the way from the north to south and east to west. It also serves as sort of the gateway, uh, at the tip and a focal point at the end, which is a really nice central amenity. We also have a large, that large eastern park is, is off to northeast, which will serve, really serve the community at, at Broad as well. It's just a really nice space. The star areas that you see are individual little open space seating areas and pocket parks. And again, uh, four miles of, of bike paths and walking trails linking all of these open space amenities. For the next slide. So this is just a, a little bit of a detail of what we're developing. Um, and, and this is, is in concept form. So we, we've got, uh, we've got work to do and we've got some comments on this too. But really, this is, uh, a, a really nice open space park that serves for soccer complexes. Of soccer complex, we have everything from field size up to, uh, U eight through high school. We're proposing sand volleyball, parking space. And of course, the south side of the creek has the walking loops and trails that connect up to the neighborhoods. And lots of naturalized plantings and, and, uh, managed areas that will just look, look great for the residents. Go on to the next one. The central park, we just, just want to touch base a little bit on this because it's so hard from the broader plan to really understand, well, what's going on in this central open space. There is a water feature right up the entry, um, as well as we're gonna incorporate a really nice entrance feature in there on, in the center of the site of the site. So if you come in from the south off the entrance, you'll be able to see the community and it'll, it'll look great. From the, from the standpoint of an entry, uh, view, uh, there's pathway systems. There's a loop trail, about a quarter mile loop trail in this particular park area. You see there at the northern end, you've got a pool area, uh, with seating areas surrounding it with a mix of multipurpose, four-season, uh, passive and record, uh, active recreational uses. You got a fire pit, a bag toss, pickleball court, um, you know, lots of gathering spaces. This is, this is really something that'll, I, I think will be a really nice addition to, to this community. Go on to the next one. I just, just briefly, just quickly, just touching base on the neighborhood features. And I think it's so important, we, we've spent a lot of time, uh, on the concept and how this site brings it together. But you can't leave out the smaller neighborhood features. And these are also gonna have lots of, lots of active and, and passive recreational opportunities in them. This is just showing you two of them. Um, we're looking at bocce courts. And the east feature, uh, pergola with seating, lots of landscaping, colonnade of shade trees that kind of focuses your view. Fire pit overlooking, you know, the natural area. The top right-hand corner would be, of course, a, a tot lot for, for the residents to be able to use, um, and, and lots of seating areas in that spot. And these, and this is just two of, of many that we're gonna be developing throughout the corridor. You can go ahead and go on. So just to kind of sum it up, I, I, I know I, I really've taken probably too much of your time and I'm certainly, uh, wanna talk through this. I could go on and probably talk about this plan for, for way longer than you want me to, but just to recap. You know, uh, the benefits of this plan really are the collector road that, the, of this new plan. That's a, a very, uh, good enhancement over the last plan, which is the collector road from Ranking to Timber. Uh, Big Timber Road, uh, decrease in the percentage of townhomes, increase of diversity of housing. Central Park amenities, sports, the sports complex area, the, and all of the open space that we've, uh, we've put into the site. I think with that, I'll turn it over to any questions you might have.
Does that conclude the, the full, uh, presentation from the development team?
Yes, at this point, I think what we can do, we've given kind of the overview with it and coupled with what you've gone through in your staff report. I think we've got a lot out there. Uh, I think you had next to if we want to throw it out there for questions or comments on it, we can touch base on it as, as we go or at the end of it all, so. Appreciate the time.
Yeah, I, so I, I'd suggest, uh, you know, Chairman Book, if, if you'd like to, uh, lead a discussion here, we can certainly follow the items that we've got in the report to kind of guide our discussion or, or let it be a little bit more, uh, free flowing. It's, you know, up to you. It's your meeting.
Well, again, I'll make the suggestion, um, that based on a lot of effort that went in by staff. Uh, in the packet that we received, there is a page or two of, uh, things that we really need to be considering as part of the review of this plan this evening. We can start by going through that. Uh, I'm also willing to say to any of the other commissioners, if they've got a pressing point, uh, that they'd like to lead off with, we can, we can do that as well. But otherwise, by default, we can go through the staff prepared list of things and, uh, and you or I can kind of step through that, uh, however you decide. It's fine with me. Any commissioners wish to raise anything immediately?
Uh, yeah, real quick, one of the things that jumps out to me is with all these parks. Uh, it was my understanding that there really isn't going to be an HOA, this won't be an HOA community. So now we're down to, okay, who does the maintenance of the parks? And our HOA here on, on our side. You know, you have two entities, you have the village itself doing maintenance of some areas is, as well as the HOA, in this case, generally it's acres. How will that work? So something to be discussed at some point here, how, how, how that kind of stuff would be work along with general access paths to the various, um, recreational amenities. Uh, I know there's some point that, uh, I think the east park currently is only available by
Vehicle.
Vehicle, yeah, so.
Through the, through Big Timber.
Yeah, we're somewhat, I, I, in, even in, in here and, and, uh, uh, Cambridge Lakes, even on both sides, there's disjointed uh, paths. We have one that kind of go off to nowhere and, and, and a sense, you end at, uh, a couple of roads with, and so you have to loop back, uh, uh, turn yourself around and, and head back. No continuous loops, uh, at all, all points. Some points are, but not all of them. So that, that's kind of just sort of a general aesthetic maintenance and, uh, sort of recreational, uh, walking, biking, running access.
I, I'm happy to address that, uh, that comment right now. Um, Commissioner, thank you for that. To that point, th- this will be an HOA community. A distinction was made throughout the process on this one, that this is going to be a separate and distinct HOA. New Homeowners Association. So this will be, uh, kept up and maintained similar to how other communities in, in Pingree Grove are already maintained. The homeowners association would be appropriate for it. The, the, the one thing I would point out is at this point in time that East Park, uh, the, you know, what we've, were currently shown is a soccer complex, right? And it could be a, uh, uh, a lacrosse or some other type of sport as well. We kind of put that out there as an idea. Uh, one of the things that has been shared with us over our history is the village and the pride that it takes in the, you know, in, in the original Cambridge Lakes development, we built the first, that Little League complex. And then we added parks when we went forward with the park side section. The, it was requested to add some more ball fields, right? Because Pingree Grove has become a bit of a, uh, regional hub for, uh, sports, especially youth, youth sports in the area. I have a number of friends who, you know, will call and say, hey, I spent all weekend in Pingree. Thanks a lot because I was watching, you know, baseball tournament all weekend. So that East Park Sports Complex is contemplated to be, uh, owned and maintained by the village, similar to how the baseball fields are currently, but all the other, Central Park, the walking trails within Cambridge Lakes North, the different features and, um, community spaces, the bocce, all that other stuff will be maintained and paid for by the new resident homeowners association of Cambridge Lakes North. So I hope that, I think I touched on all the points you raised. If there's something else, I'm happy to.
Yeah, would be the general access to that, to, to the east complex. It's only going to be by, uh, you have to drive over there.
That's the way that it looks right now, yes. Um, it, it would be predominantly that way. A- again, more so for sports and people driving there. And then the other thing too, is to keep some, some semblance of distance to where the south of the creek that's attached to the, um, that neighborhood over there, that area over there would be sort of a, would be a, a, a natural, it would be an area for the neighborhood itself and maintained by the homeowners association, but north of the creek would be park that could be maintained by the village. So the access to south is through the neighborhood, the access to the north, which would be the village, would be, uh, via road.
I have a question regarding the age targeted community. How do you define age targeted?
Uh, it, it, it's a, it's a fine point. I appreciate that. Uh, the difference is, is age targeted is being used as a term of art essentially to des- to describe product that is generally desired by buyers that are fifty-five and older. It's similar to, it's the same product that we currently build at Carolon at Cambridge Lakes. The difference would be whereas at Carolon and Cambridge Lakes, it is a deed restricted where all buyers have to be fifty-five and over. We, this one would not have the deed restriction on it. Uh, we've done this in a number of communities. We're finding more and more that the market is looking more towards a, uh, a, a home that does not necessarily have that restriction on it. They're looking towards when they resell it, they, they don't want to be limited to who they can sell it on. But from a bedroom count standpoint, from a product itself, it's still the, you know, the Carolon buyer that is buying those. Our, our newest community, uh, for this, the, um, Lincoln Valley, which we are building the, in, in North Aurora, it's the old Fox Valley Golf Course. You drive into it, it looks like a Carolon. It's similar to the Carolon. It's a lot of the product that you'd see right there. But it, it doesn't have the fifty-five and over restriction on the deed itself. But we're still seeing the same demographic of buyers buying that product because that's what they're looking for. They're generally small. It's a smaller two-bedroom, possibly three-bedroom, single-family, people looking to downsize into a single-story living.
But it's available to all age groups, correct?
Anyone could buy it, yes, but we are seeing it still being bought by the fifty-five and over age group.
Also, what amenities are being provided for seniors in this development for the age targeted group?
The only thing, we, we really haven't provided anything for seniors in this one specifically. The only thing we have is on that section, which is the west section, which we showed, is a bocce court. But everyone in the community would share in the central pool facility, the walking trails and everything else. So they would all share the same clubhouse for all thousand homes.
Is there, there is no clubhouse, correct?
No, there is no clubhouse on this, on this community.
There's no indoor pool, indoor pool, outdoor pool?
Outdoor pool only.
For all this development, one small pool for all these people, all these units? Do you think that'll accommodate them?
I, I, I believe so. It's a pool that's similar in size to the one at Cambridge Lakes on the south side. The, at a, it's a, it's a smaller total development than Cambridge Lake South is.
But there aren't any other, uh, the, any other amenities for seniors in this development?
No, no.
What incentive is there for the seniors to come to this development?
I, I think the product itself is a desirable product and people want to live in in Pingree Grove. And the other thing with it too is the number one thing that we've made, right, is, and, and Rich touched on this quite a bit. The, you know, forty-one percent open space, the interconnectivity. Our, our history throughout, you know, our developments, not only here in Pingree Grove, but everywhere else with clubhouses that we've built, with pools, with all of the different things we've built. Throughout, number one, you know, the, the number one amenity, regardless of where we build, has always been walking trails, paths and open space, right? And that's the focus of this community. The interconnectivity and especially, you know, what we've all experienced in the last year. Getting outside and walking seems to be everybody's number one activity and what everyone seems to want to do, right? This, we've done, uh, we, we've worked hard to make all of these neighborhoods connect. And then we also have a plan on this too, to provide connectivity via Ryan King to continue that walk, you know, that bike path system. So all of Cambridge, you know, not only all Cambridge, all of Pingree Grove essentially will be connected too. So you have a very, very attractive community throughout all of Pingree Grove that has a lot of outdoor activities, outdoor amenities and, you know, uh, outdoor amenities available to it. That's what we think will be the primary attractive on this one.
Other question I have is the, it shows a landscape burn between A fifteen and Carolon and also there's nothing connecting or nothing providing a buffer for A sixteen to Carolon. Is it gonna be corrected or is it gonna stay as it is?
That is something that we're having conversations with staff on. Uh, if there's guidance from the commission as far as what they would like to see, we're, you know, we, we kind of showed it with both, right? We showed with, uh, one neighborhood, we showed a berm with another neighborhood, we didn't. I, I think in, I, I think we'll touch on it too because I think it was in the staff report that there's some, you know, uh, public comments on this as well. Uh, uh, we're certainly flexible and we'll provide some sort of buffering there that seems appropriate for the, for the uses.
Based on some of the feedback already, we received some letters that have come in. There definitely is a concern about the buffering. Something could affect a, a berm probably isn't enough. I think some, some of the residents got confused that there were a single family. Uh, what even, even the fact that those are aged, aged, uh, marketed. It doesn't mean that they're all going to be, you know, senior types in, in those houses. Uh, somebody always will look for, oh, this is a, a nice home, a nice starter home, and it's a nice size, two bedrooms, whatever. Without remembering, going through the details. The, the, one of the suggestions was, and it was a pretty forceful letter, multiple, multiple paragraphs about berm and fencing. Uh, to, to keep the separation there, there are Carolons and we have some, I believe so, we have some Caroloners in the commission. I'm not one of them, uh, that, uh, would like to see, I believe, I'd like to see the separation. You know, they moved there for, for the gated reason, even though it's not gated gated, it's still a se- a separate com- community. Age, uh, targeted with aged targeted amenities. So I mean, I think that's a real, real big concern for, for our residents over uh, in Carolon. And I think that's something that, uh, probably needs to be, you know, um, definitely addressed in a more affirmative and helpful way.
I, I appreciate that and that's something we'll continue to work through with staff and, and on this one too. I, I, I think, I, I appreciate the forceful letter that, uh, you've received. I, I, I've received several of the multi-paragraph letters myself, right, when for, it, it's one of those ones. Right? When for, i- it's one of those ones too where for everyone that I've received that wants to have a fence, there will be others that say they don't want a fence. They don't want the upkeep. They don't want the maintenance. They don't want, they don't like the way that it looks, right? So it's a, I, I'd like to continue to work through to figure out what's the best one to find out. What everyone feels is the best way to bu- provide. I can commit to a buffer, the exact buffer that we'll get to, I, I think is still to be determined.
Yeah, this is Ron. I'd like to agree with Rich on that, um, but I'd like to see an aggressive buffer there. Cause there's no guarantee that that's going to be age targeted forever. Maybe through the first generation of owners after that, who knows? And as far as the swimming pool and all that, there's with that rental, it's gonna be a lot of kids in that, they're gonna they're, they're gonna flood that swimming pool. No age people are gonna, age target people are gonna go there from experience here and over across the street.
Uh, appreciate the comment. Thank you.
I agree. There aren't any amenities, but I would encourage people to use this development. It's sort of like they're left on their own, basically. Or go someplace else. I have another issue I'd like to bring up and that is the phase one development of Rankin Road and partly the phase two development of the road going up to Big Timber Road. Uh, in the agreement, the information indicates that Rankin Road will be built. But the agreements have to be made for the continuation up to Big Timber Road. I would suggest having that road continue and build all the way up to Big Timber Road. That rather won't be an, an, and you get it, and you get the ability about that road being extended in the future. If it was connected straight through, all the way through to Big Timber, there would be another access for construction. Instead of all the construction coming up Rankin Road into this development causing noise, everything along the western bounty of Caroline.
Uh, I, I understand that comment. The, the challenge with the building that all the way up through to Big Timber in phase one is the different agencies that are involved trying to get that road connected through. I- it's a longer time and a longer term to try to get to it. So it's a question of being able to get the development in and then providing that connection once we get the appro- the appropriate approvals from entities outside of Pingree Grove that is really providing the challenge on that one.
And maybe, maybe, uh, village manager can remind us of who those entities are that, that would uh, factor into, uh, getting that road open up to B- uh, Big Timber.
Certainly, there, there's a number of agencies that would likely exert some jurisdictional review. And I would concur with, uh, Mr. Lester's account there that there is a timeframe that is associated with that, that typically, uh, you know, can run certainly six to twelve months and occasionally even longer. Um, but you're, you're going to be dealing with access permits with Kane County, uh, that Big Timber Road is a Kane County road. So they'll have jurisdictional authority over that access and its design and intersection improvements, road improvements, so on and so forth. Uh, there's a flood plain that runs along Ekin Creek. So in, in doing that and doing a bridge crossing, uh, you're going to be working with FEMA with regard to, uh, the flood. You'll likely be working with the IDNR. And you may even have the Army Corps of Engineers in, involved in there, depending on what the conditions are, uh, present in that location. So anytime that you're uh, dealing with all of those different agencies, uh, it, it certainly adds time to it. And I think that's, that was one of the main concerns that the staff brought forward. As I, uh, mentioned earlier, was we wanted to make sure that that thing was secured in phase one for the very reasons that uh, were brought up and we're, we're discussing this point. There is a reality to the permit process that will, um, prolong that construction or at least the installation of the bridge, uh, or fill within the floodplain area. So that, that's a legitimate point.
Thank you.
Uh, if I can piggyback onto Jack's comments, um, one question I had was how are you going to ensure that for phase one people will not come down forty-seven and turn left onto Ryan King and back into the development that way? Because with the intersection of forty-seven and Ryan King being so substandard, that could create a real safety and traffic hazard.
I, I think the plan is we'll put signage up, will in, indicate that the road is closed through there. I think that it already is. And we'll provide clear direction on how to get to the, to the neighborhood via Ryan King through seventy-two.
If I can suggest signage isn't going to cut it.
Okay.
You, you're gonna need to put a physical barrier.
Yep. And that's something that we can certainly work through with the village and with, uh, the landowners that have that land there. Up, up past our property. So.
Uh, Mr. Lester, uh, isn't the ranking, uh, road blocked further south anyway? Would it be just a matter of, you know, moving those barricades a little bit closer to Gilbert's Farm there?
I, I think we can certainly look at that and work through with what, uh, the village staff would like to do there. That it's certainly something that we're, we're, one, most importantly, right? It's very important for us as far as when we want people to come and we have our, you know, when it's under development, we have our sales operations, right? And we're out there, we want people to have the experience that they want. We've put a lot of effort into the community. You know, as, as Rich touched on, the community itself, right? The, the arrival that you have when you come in that spine road with the landscaping, with the park, with everything else, right? We want people's first impression to be the best one, right? A lot of us on the call, right, have spent, you know, have, have chosen to live in Pingree Grove, right? That it's where we, we make our home or where people have made their home. We're going to make sure that they arrive at the community way we want to and we'll work with staff to make sure they're not going down the road that isn't in a good condition of traveling.
Thank you.
Another question, um, in the phase one where you show ranking road being extended north to this development. Uh, what about the possibility of extending ranking road north to Big Timber? And then using that extension that is by Gilbert's, in the possibility of naming it another road. At some point, if forty-seven is modified, changed, built, that could connect to forty-seven at that point. And initially have ranking go, go straight all the way to north to Big Timber. And they have feeder roads coming off. But I know that it takes time to get the project approved through the state. What kind of a timeframe would you anticipate getting the approvals from all the agencies?
Is, as far as what we have right now for the road network that we've shown or the idea of changing Ryan King?
Uh, both.
Well, as far as changing Ryan King, what we've done and what Rich showed earlier was to tie, was to meld in what the village comprehensive plan shows for the future road network. The village plan actually shows Ryan King starting to head south to connect up to forty-seven. At basically where our subdivision starts. The on, the other problem with, uh, the other issue that we'd face with the plan that you've outlined right now is that involves land that we do not own or control. I- in, there isn't something that we could guarantee or we could agree to as far as that. I- i- it's not feasible or beyond, it's beyond our control. With, one of the things that was important to the village board and to staff when we started this process over a year ago was they wanted a connection to big. This is the fastest and best way to provide that connection up to Big Timber for the village of Pingree Grove that, uh, uh, this property allows for and the construction can start on this as soon as the summer.
Oh, Lester. Now that you talked about the collector between, uh, ranking and Big Timber, are you going to have construction only coming from ranking or are you going to use Big Timber entrance? And if so, which phases?
Well, the connection, I, I think we would utilize a Big Timber construction entrance. But only after that connection from Big Timber South would made. So a connection for construction wouldn't take place until after phase two at the earliest. Because that's when we're talking about that road being connected through. So the initial, the initial part in the initial phase would use ranking in order to get to the site.
So that would be about two-thirds of all the development is what it looks like.
I, I, I don't think.
Phase one and phase two are very large.
Let's see, I think we have, I mean, phase one and phase two are about three hundred units total. Uh, maybe about five hundred, so maybe half of the development. But phase three and phase four is another, you know, i- is another three hundred or so development. So it is, I, 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 I understand that, but from a timing standpoint, to get, as we said, to get that bridge crossing across Ekin Creek, uh, it's going to take some time in order to do it.
You also have to create a bridge across Tyler Creek, don't you?
Yes, and we've planned for that and that permit process has already started.
But in the interim, all the access to this development is going to be Rankin Road for construction. And also for when people start living there, they're only going to have one access point to this development. Is that correct?
That is correct. And i- if that's not very different, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Don't you think that's a problem? Have you one access point?
It's not very different than what we've done for Caroline or what we did for Parkside.
It's still a headache.
I- it's not always the best solution. I could appreciate that. Um, but it is the, i- i- it is what we have at this point in time.
I, I think also this is wrong again, um, the first part of ranking, it's already developed, is pretty, getting pretty worn down already with all this traffic next five years. Do you have any plans on that? Helping out the village?
It's certainly, I mean, it's a village road, but it's certainly something we can talk about with the village.
A quick question on ranking. Let's see, those neighborhoods, I don't believe it, I, Jeff, you can correct me. Uh, actually, in fact, I don't know. Have any of those neighborhoods in, uh, Parks Side been turned over to the village, including roads?
Uh, I'm not familiar with the specific details there. I believe that certain areas probably have been, but uh, maybe Bruce or Chris could address that. I, I know we recently talked about the ball fields over there. There are a few punch list items. I don't, I don't have the specific information available.
If the neighborhood's been turned over or not, man, kind of with the roads, like Ryan King in particular, and well, oh, and Richard J. Uh, Brown there, that for, that are now a village maintenance. Uh, how it's happened in the past, I know you're, 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 you're the new kid on the block here, is that once all the punch stuff was done in the village and a particular neighborhood was built out to a certain percentage, then it was turned over to the village for road maintenance in particular. Uh, you know, and then a few other, a few other things. Uh, sometimes it gets tricky because, you know, the section that, uh, we live here in, uh, South Bay, we have that spur of, uh, the bike path that runs along that, well, that's and the lakes, that's maintained by the HOA for the most part. Uh, so, you know, that, that was just something as the, what, uh, being brought up about uh, the heavy use of the road now as it is, whose responsibility for any maintenance of that road? I mean, repairs of the road at, at this point.
Yeah, al- ultimately the village is, uh,
Will be.
Recipient of these public roads and.
That's right. I, I understand that. But I mean, who, who has responsibility for, for maintenance uh, of it now? Generally, what had happened in the past before the roads were turned over, plowing was done by the contractor that the village also uses as well as the HOA. Uh, the, the Acres Group, uh, would come and plow. Once they're turned over, the snow plowing, uh, felt it tell to the village trucks, uh, to do that, like where we are now, since we've been turned over for several years. Uh, that was just considering, you know, what was brought up about the, that how the roads are going to get beaten up, uh, like pretty quickly by construction. So you know, that was just, that, just the thought. But another thing, which we have, I don't know if it was on our, our list of things, it looks like we're, we're liable to be here for, for decades going to this list is the, uh, the water issue. You know, I know, I know there's, there's work, work, uh, going on. I don't have the details here that what's happening because that's going to be a huge impact on water treatment and water usage, uh, uh, for this. This is a pretty aggressive, uh, development, a large number of houses. I know it's spread over a number of years, but still the water issue is going to come to a head, uh, very shortly. When you start adding in, uh, it's even happening now with the new development on Parkside. Where it's, you know, the, the, the costs for developing, uh, the water treatment and I don't know if there, there's a new, another water tower being considered. You know, and, and those issues. So that, that's something I know we really have to be cognizant of. Uh, running through the list of things, there are many of them are, I think are pretty, pretty straightforward. That, that, I know Horton has and the village have worked in the past and come to, you know, agreements on, you know, like, uh, road widths and sidewalks and trees, uh, you know, that, that kind of things. Uh, even the storm, storm order management, um, my details that generally, you know, get worked out in the fullness of, of time before, you know, the, even after some of the shit, the dirt has been started to be, be shoveled. So uh, I know the water issue is one. Uh, another issue, um, and it has more to do with management of the area is that, that rental area. Uh, they say, well, we're going to turn it over to an industrial ma- like, I, I, eh, property management company of, of some kind. That can be a bit of concern because that's totally different from what this, the, you were saying in, in this community. Yes, houses are rented. Uh, townhouses are rented and so on, but those are done, handled generally by individuals and not a contractor, if you, if you will. So that, that I do have a concern uh, with that. It's, it's, uh, you had mentioned that that's, it is a new, a new concept. Uh, and from that standpoint, not that it's rental. No, what's, what's the concern is that now you have these X number of rental units that you've got to have a, a rental management agency involved in that. And that, that can be a bit of, bit of a concern. It's different than your HOA. We pay for the HOA, we have control of, and many aspects of the HOA. Uh, this, this could be, you know, definitely is something I think that the, the village, uh, and the board have to, uh, uh, be aggressive about and controlling.
I, I, I can address that directly. There will be a specific management company for that, for that section itself. Its responsibility will be solely that section for the rental housing. So the, a- as you said, institutional investor ownership and then that pro- that, that pot itself will have a management company that's dedicated specifically to that itself. So i- it, it's only responsibility will be for that section of housing. That'll be different than the HOA, which.
Correct, yeah. And that's, I think that's where there's, there's can, you know, can, concern, you know, these houses are rented. You know, the rental agency then has to make sure they're maintained, uh, besides just, you know, you're always going to hope you have nice renters. And sometimes you don't, most, mostly really, you, you always do. Uh, m- most people care about, you know, where they, they live and their environment. They, the good renters always treat it like it's their own. Uh, so that, that, but I think, you know, it, right now, it just doesn't quite seem to fit in with the, uh, the, the villages. In fact, I don't believe it's in the, um, our long-term plan uh, for this, the development plan, uh, for, for this, this kind of, uh, housing entity. Uh, we do have to be cognizant that we want to have in the mix of housing, um, affordable housing, you know, as required by, by, by statutes. I mean, we certainly want to see that. The rental units could, could, could meet, meet, meet that, that mix, but I'm not, um, I'm a little bit concerned, you know, that, that it's appropriate.
No, I, I understand that.
Not doing it, and not doing the not in my backyard kind of thing here, here, here at all.
We can let the record reflect that, right? Um, I, I, and I, I appreciate it, right? Because again, it is, i- i- it is something new, right? And, and, and as, as Jeff said, um, earlier, there is a, uh, you know, there, there's a Wall Street Journal article out yesterday talking about how this is something new and it's coming into different areas and it's a, a new way of going. It's a it's a demographic that continues to grow. A, an, an area where, you know, you're seeing people moving out of the city, but maybe don't have the ability to get the down payment yet. Lot of millennials, it's, it's sliding into that, you know, maybe, uh, ten years ago. Uh, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, when, when you, there, there were first time buyers able to buy a home at a, a much lower price point. Um, or had the savings to have enough for a down payment, but you're seeing. You know, there's so many people coming out with student debt, right, having. Or they just haven't had the ability to come up with a down payment, but still want that, that same choice to be able to live in single family. Uh, and and to a single family living, so.
Hmm.
One of the things with this too, right, is. We're, we're putting our name on it, right, Mr. Horton, it has his name on this, i- it's not something that we're. Put out there, right, it, the exterior maintenance, the landscaping. All of these things are done and handled by the management company, right, it isn't something that's left to chance, it isn't a. Um. You know, a. Somebody who read a, you know, a, 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 or listened to a podcast, right, or read Rich Dad, Poor Dad and said, hey. Passive income, cash flow, that's the best, that's my best way to going forward, this is. Wall Street money, right, this is somebody that's going to be buying a hundred, a hundred and fifty houses at one point in time. That is a significant investment, and it is not something that's left to chance. Right, so, the first owner of this business will be us, right, and put that out there, but. All of it is covered, all of it is maintained, the management company is in place, there are professional leases, there are. Safeguard put in place, all of this stuff is done, so it is an attractive and desirable place to be.
Yes, hopefully. I mean, I.
Have any, do you have any market research information that you can share with the commission, for example? The length of stay in one of these units by a renter, is it for? You know, typically just a one year stay and then they, they move, or is this a place that they would live for five years? Uh, or something like that before they would move on? Any information along those lines that?
You know, I I I could tell you, uh, if, if, uh, I'm a, I'm a former baseball guy, right, and I love baseball statistics and the, uh. The scary thing is always small sample size, right, again, this being a new concept and coming out there. What we've got so far, um, i- is still new, but I can share with you right now, we're typically seeing. The typical lease term is twelve months right now, that, that's what we're seeing right now. Uh, we are seeing in different areas, they're leasing up. Double of what our typical sales absorption would be in an area, so if a community sells. Two a month, and we're putting this in other areas in other parts of town, or not other parts of town yet, this would be the first one in Chicago. But as Jeff alluded to, there's, you know, some in Florida or some in Texas. Where they're part of an overall master plant community, where if the Horton development there for a similar product is selling. Two a month. These would lease up at four a month, and then you're starting to see people that are moving from this into the. Um. Into the for sale, right, it's the, I, I don't know if moving out to the suburbs or moving here is something that's necessarily for me. But I like to try it first, right, and i- it, a similar progression is what we've seen. In our history, not only in Pingree Grove, but in other areas where people have bought townhomes in our communities. And then two month, or two years later, three years later, they're moving to a single family. You know, and we, we even have instances now where we, we've, we've been in Pingree long enough where. Somebody has bought a single family from us, and then. Fast forward ten years, twelve years, they've now bought a home over in Carol on, right, it's the, the continued thing. That trust that people put in us as Horton. This type of product, this type of, you know, this type of housing opportunity would be no different than that.
I will say one of the, possibly, uh, one of the. One of the best things actually you said was that you have your name on it. And during the market downturn, you guys were still here building, so that, that's a plus.
We never stop.
We never, didn't bail like some other, some other, uh, one or two of the builders around here. Uh, you know, bailed under their developments and were picked up by, uh, you know, another developer. So I mean, now that, that, that I'll give you, that's a plus, there's still a concern, it is new. Uh. And, and again. It's the, it's, I guess it's the management of the rental. And the maintenance of the rental properties, that would be more of a concern than the fact that it's rental. That's, that's, that's my, that's my major concern, okay, you got this, and as you're, you're saying now, you guys will start, you'll be the management company. In the beginning, which is a good thing, okay, I, uh, based on your guys' track record. Uh, beyond that, you know. You know, and market downturns, uh, companies fold, companies bail. You know, we've seen with the pandemic, how, how, uh, and not just, you know, the mom and pops that got, got hammered, you know, a lot of, lot, other. Large interest entities, you know, had a serious, you know, took a serious beating, so. I mean, that, that's probably the management of, and the maintenance of the properties is my number one concern.
Yeah, now, I would like to add to that if I can. Um, I have that same concern with, uh. With the management part, I'm. Probably more concerned with the future, five, ten years, fifteen years from now, this is something new, so nobody knows. What if, uh, they sell the whole thing to somebody else? Um, we don't know what's going to happen in the future with that rental, it sounds good now, but we don't know. And also, who? Is regulating that properties, HOA, they're going to have any control over them, the maintenance, the appearance of their. Property and all that?
That's something I can think we can work through, um, a- as far as the five or ten years, you know, uh. Building upon, um, what Commissioner Eckert, you know, talked about. Uh, one of the, you know, one of the defaults I have. Kind of gone to as far as an answer, uh, a few times on this, and it's not a, you know, it's not meant to be a, uh. A, a non-answer or a cop out, but, uh, y- y- you, I appreciate the point that you made in terms of. Our history with, with this village goes back a long time, um, we came out when the village was. In the process of being swallowed up and annexed by Elgin, and a, a, a group of people did not want that to happen, they wanted to continue to maintain. Pingree Grove and to continue, and to see it grow, because they knew that, they knew the future was there. Um. We've been through boom times and bad times, and the constant throughout all of it has been. Horton and village staff, even though staff may have changed, even though boards may have changed. We've always found a way to work out and build something together, right, so that's. One of the key things, and Rich touched on it throughout his presentation, right, what we've done is carried forward, a lot of the things that have made us. Successful together in the past, you know, a lot of the design developments, a lot of the standards, a lot of the product. But then also looked towards that next evolution, that next thing, so this, this build to rent is a next. Evolution in housing product. One of the first places we're bringing it to in the Chicagoland area is Pingree Grove, and. I don't have all the answers to it right now, but I can tell you, we'll continue to work with staff to come up with something. As far as HOA having oversight or having some participation, as far as I, I think that's something we can build into it, because. I would ca- I, I would imagine that there will be some sort of a agreement between the two that makes it so. That management company in the eight, i- is part of the HOA, and the HOA does have some oversight or some ability. To provide some of the safeguards that you guys would be looking for on that community.
Yes, the reason I brought up the HOA is the people living in the rentals are going to be used in Central Park and all this stuff, which would be paid through to HOA. Other people, so where are they putting their input in?
No, and there would be, for that, for them to use that, they would be paying their fair share to that homeowners association. So it would all be, it wouldn't be something that is burdened on any group or any section of residents. Unproportionally. I don't know if that's a word, but I just used it.
I don't want to keep beating up on the, the rental section, but. I'm just wondering, I'm not a big fan of the idea, but I'm just. The placement of it really bothers me is where it's located. Is it possible that? I'm open to the idea or to the purpose of it, but maybe it could be moved up, maybe towards like, off of Big Timber to have its own access point. Over some. Some later date over that way?
Um, that's something we could look at, the, you know, one of the main reasons for the. Location of it is its timing and the phasing of it, right, the ability to get a new, but. Part of it is to be able to help fund the improvements that we're putting into the village right now, is that. The reason for the placement of it and the location of it in terms of that phase, we can look at, uh, potential for. Other spots on it, but that's where we've identified as the best phase.
I just think with the, you're talking twelve month leases, you're going to have a lot of U-Hauls coming in and going out. And I think that the purpose of it should be more to, uh, a private area, not, not that it's not inclusive, but. That it's not so always, oh, there goes another U-Haul or, or whatever in, in the build.
Understood, and it's a fair point, uh, and I, I, I wish to reiterate. My statement on twelve month leases was meant only to answer the question as far as what we are. Uh, what we're currently seeing, it isn't to say we're only doing twelve month leases, or we won't do, i- i- it's just, it's more of a data point. On what we've seen in that type of housing product today.
Okay, uh, another question I have for you guys is. The, everything is mentioned as detention basin, um, are these detention basins, or will they be? Retention basins, are they just overflow, or will there be water in them constantly, or? Marshy area?
I'm going to ask.
I can answer that if you'd like. Yeah, so the, the, the detention basins will be a mixture of open water, uh, basins as well as. Naturalized detention basins, so if you look at the plan, the color plan, you'll see wherever there's blue. That's where we intend to have open water basins, and then wherever you see, um, green, uh, detention areas. That's where we would incorporate naturalized planting, and, uh, those would have water during storm events. But then that water would draw back down, and you would, you would have the naturalized plantings, and those, those actually are opportunities, um. For, for nice landscaping, and we've been developing those areas for the, for twenty years now, and. And, uh, if they're done correctly, and if they're done right, they turn out to be a really nice amenity, because you get color throughout the season, there's a, a nice green to it. So, yeah, so that, what you see on the plan, all the blue areas are open water. And, uh, all the areas that, uh, you see in green with a little mix of blue in it, that, that would be your naturalized intention base.
Okay, thank you.
And those, and those would be managed short term, and they would have a short term maintenance program, as well as a long term maintenance program.
Okay, then another question I have is in regards to, um. The setbacks and. The driveways, I know, uh, on the, the side we're on here, the original section, a lot of people are having to park. Um, horizontally and vertically to get their cars on the driveway so that they're not blocking the sidewalks. Is it possible that maybe we decrease the size of the parkway so that the, the sidewalks would be closer to the roadway per se that? Because one of the villages codes is not to block the, the sidewalks?
That's certainly something we can discuss with staff and take a look at. Uh, for reference, so what section do you currently live in?
Uh, I live in Bay, on Bay Shore in, um. What, West Hampton? So not used to call it by its section name.
That, it's, it's quite all right, I'm used to referring to my neighborhoods by numbers, so we, 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 we all know our way around the community, but we all get there by different ways.
I question regarding the retention on. Between A fifteen and A sixteen, is the overflow going to drain into Carol on? Or through Carol on?
Chris, you want me to take this?
Yes, please, a- a- and to, I, I, I'd ask a little more clarification in terms of the overflow of. Are, are you asking if there's going to be overland flow, or is it going to be something where it connects to the existing?
E- either way, either way, is it overland, assume it's not going to be overland.
Yeah.
Is it a better road?
I just want to make sure you have the right, you, you're getting your question answered, uh.
Yes, it's going to bring somehow into Carol on.
Yeah, uh, good evening, everybody, uh, I, I haven't had a chance to introduce myself, uh, my name is Bruce Mellon, I'm with, uh. D R Horton, I'm, uh, an engineer with the company and, uh, uh, our land development manager, um, and. The design of that detention basin is designed to flow, uh, towards the, uh, existing Carol on subdivision. Uh, in between A eleven and A thirteen, there was a forty eight inch storm sewer. Uh, forty eight or forty two, I can't remember right now, uh, storm sewer. Uh, designed to, uh, pick up that flow, the land. Prior to any development, uh, this development or the Carol on development always flowed in that direction, and. Uh, the Carol on subdivision was designed to maintain that flow, and. Uh. In this location, uh, the water will be, uh, you know, detained, retained. Uh, in the subdivision to reduce the flows, uh, that are, uh. Uh, leaving the site currently, in order to, uh, you know, be good neighbors and conform to the Kane County Stormwater Ordinance.
So it will drain into a storm sewer? You're correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, I have another question for whoever can answer, um. The collector road from Big Timber to ranking. Who's going to maintain that, is the village, or is it going to be through the HOA? And also, have two roundabouts, you don't have one on Olympia and Austin, how come? Seems like a weird intersection there.
Uh, all. The roads in Cambridge Lakes North will all be public roads, there is one contemplated in neighborhood thirty four, I believe, that will be a private one. And maintained by that neighborhood's homeowners association, it's that. Uh, seaboard neighbor, or the townhome neighborhood in the southwest corner, that is the only private drive. That's contemplated for the entire neighborhood, everything else would be public streets. Uh, we did have, a- and as far as the other intersection, as far as the roundabout. Um, I, I, I think I, if we could zoom in, I think that's the one outside of neighborhood forty one. Was that the area you were talking about?
Yes.
All right, we had a, uh, we did have a roundabout there at one point in time, actually, the one that, that's currently showing it. Concord was there originally, conversations with staff had allowed us, it encouraged us to move that down to there. And then also, our traffic study had shown it was a better location for there, um, so that's why it's located where it is.
Perhaps I can add a little bit to that, there was some discussion at the staff level early on. Looking at the utilization of that Central Park amenity and thinking about. How traffic works and how pedestrians may be crossing, uh, roads and things. Uh. There was kind of a conflict between one wanting to provide a continuous road that gets people up and through to Big Timber. But then also managing the issue of potential cut through traffic. Particularly in the area of, uh, a Central Park. So this design with the sort of T intersection at Austin and Olympia. Creates an opportunity where the cars would have to stop at that location and intentionally make a turn. That next roundabout at Concord, if you're headed south, uh, would then continue to kind of keep the. You know, perform some traffic calming, so you're not really. Blowing through that area, and that right by the park where you may have more activity, uh, and people in, in the vicinity, so. I, I think. You know, you can make some arguments in, in both directions there, but, uh. What the development team put together, along with, uh, the traffic study. Uh, opted for this, uh, orientation for, for at least some of those reasons, if, if not others as well.
Okay, do you believe it'll be a three way stop sign or just one stop sign at? Neighborhood forty one coming out?
Uh, I don't know that we've looked at it that closely, uh, it would. Just looking at it, I would expect, uh, a northbound stop at Austin and Olympia. Um. You know, we'd have to defer to some of the traffic, uh, you know, engineers in terms of how to appropriately. Uh, deal with that situation.
Okay, one reason I bring it up is because a lot of people here, and s- south of us is going to use it as a shortcut.
That's, it's, it's something we'll continue to look at and, and work through with staff to come up. That's, it's, it's something we'll continue to look at and, and work through with staff to come up with the ultimate design on that intersection.
And back to the age targeted, uh, communities that you're, sections that you're talking, uh, did you say that those were only gonna be ranch style? Or will it be two-story in there?
That's, that's the plan for right now. We would have, we would, we would continue the second story option that we offer for the ranch product at Caroline currently. But they would be predominantly single floor level with the option of putting a second floor up. That's what's contemplated at this time.
Uh, the only reason I ask is because if we, uh, I know there is a lot of concern with Caroline and a two-story home would seem to be more invasive of their space where they're looking down onto that. So if it was a ranch style, it wouldn't be so much. And then if there was a burn to separate the communities, just my thought is, is that the two stories would be a mistake there.
I, I can appreciate that and I, I, I think we, I, I think we've established in our conversations earlier that that section is gonna require some additional looking, right? Uh, we've heard everything from, you know, uh, we need some sort of a buffer. We need aggressive buffering. It's clearly an area we're gonna continue to look at. I'll, I'll put that in kind of the mix when we look at all of that area and look at those houses in conjunction under that.
Speaking of that area, there's a possibility of flipping neighborhood A 15 within 41. So it would be single family homes in the southern border of the pressure, project.
N 41 is a two-story product. So again, it's the, we'd be swapping out one, one idea for, uh, for another, right? It, it, that shows all ranch, it shows all ranch product and has the buffering there to provide the separation between the two.
A, uh, quick, uh, question slash comment on the sports park facility. Um, it seems like based on, and I know that everything's just conceptual as to what would be there, but, um, it seems like there's not a lot of parking for the amount of recreation you're putting in there. Is there any way to expand your parking area a bit?
You know, I, it, Jeff, it, it was touched on in the report as far as the parking spaces, the, the number of spaces that are provided there in line with one way of doing it. Uh, one of the things and, and the reason for the central location of it, right, is this, this, this park, this amenity in the center is designed as just that, a, a, a community gathering space.
Oh, I was referring to the east park, not the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I misunderstood you.
No problem.
It, that's, I, I, I did read that section in the report. That's something that we can take a look at. Um, ultimately, it's something that's designed for a, uh, you know, it's contemplated to be for the village to own and maintain. So it's something that will work with the village to figure out the ultimate plan for.
Hello, Chris. Um, could you elaborate on A 17 neighborhood and N 41? For Camelback and Boulder Drive going up and dead adding, dead end at the existing farmland that you don't own yet. Um, can you elaborate? Say what your plans are going into that in the future. Obviously, that's why it's there.
I, you know, a- a- at this point in time, we do not have any plans for it per se, but it's similar on the west side of the property where, you know, my, my, my eyes aren't as good as they used to be, of course.
Yeah.
So that west side, right, it, it shows a road stubbed to the west.
Olympia.
What will be the go, which is the Gilbert's property, which show, which provides the village the uh, potential for future expansion, right? The same thing with that neighborhood going to the north and that parcel, that, that J-shaped parcel to the north of neighborhood 41 and neighborhood 17, that provides connectivity for the future and allows the village to bring that in to Pingree Grove. Right? The, one of the things that the, was asked of us in our previous conversations and our previous iterations is the village wants to continue its march northward to the limits of its boundary agreement with Huntley up to Big Timber. So we believe there's going to be future developments with Pingree in these areas. They may not necessarily be ours, but there are other ones. So we're providing pathways for continued growth for the village.
Right, I understand. It just looks like that was intent when you buy to put two more neighborhoods in there. That might be a little more traffic coming through that run. I know the one on Olympia going west, it's just another run going way out for another uh, neighborhood to be put in, which soon that's gonna connect to Rankin at a certain point.
The other thing too, that those provide, right, is, uh, it, it's a fine point, but the, the road network provides one level of connectivity, but one of the main things for, for growth is the ability in where, you know, when this started, everything north of 72 was not able to be developed by Pingree Grove. It was actually belonging to Gilbert's and to others. But the ability to service land with sewer and water capabilities is what do, so those roads provide stubs for sewer and water as well to bring those properties into the village in the future.
Any commissioners have any additional questions at this time?
I'm good.
Mac, any, uh, any from your angle?
Uh, Mike, main concern was, uh, you know, since Rankin's not gonna be opening to, uh, to Big Timber, that's gonna put a lot of pressure on the southern exit of Rankin Road, uh, towards 20. Any, any kind of study been done with that? Or, uh, is it just gonna be whatever happens, happens?
I believe our traffic study does look at that. So, and Bruce, do you want to elaborate?
Yeah, uh, in the traffic study, uh, you know, it talks about the full buildout condition, um, and over time and, uh, you know, with, uh, increasing, uh, traffic in the region, not just from our development, but from the region. Uh, based on, uh, the report that, uh, KLA provided, the intersections at, uh, Andrew and Rankin, at Rankin and 72, uh, 72 and, uh, Big Timber, uh, will all function uh, at an acceptable level of service in the ultimate buildout. Um, the, during the interim, uh, there is a, a paragraph in the, the report that talks about the interim and basically by the time the fifth two built, uh, and the access to Big Timber is built, we will not have exceeded what the ultimate, uh, flow of traffic's gonna be from the ultimate project. So it, it should still function at the, uh, uh, at an acceptable level of service.
So you mentioned Andrew and, and 72. Let's go further towards Highland and 20 where the traffic circle at, uh, Damish Road. What about those intersections?
Perhaps I could speak to it a little bit. Um, you know, I'm not sure the particulars of how far some of those projections went. Uh, but certainly the circle at, uh, Damish and, uh, Rankin is an area that the village has been looking at. Uh, different options. In fact, this year's capital budget includes some design engineering funds allocated to that uh, for that very reason, to look at what might, uh, that, uh, look like, uh, in a proper sized uh, radius, or does it function best with a more standard, uh, intersection type of approach? Um, and, and the thought process there is there's some money coming from uh, the state through the Rebuild Illinois Bond Fund Program. It has to be used on certain kinds of project, projects. And the best way to use that would be to pursue a project that we can then leverage federal dollars on and hopefully get into a uh, a way to leverage those dollars on an 80 to 20, uh, basis. So that, that's something that the village is looking at. Um, we would certainly be studying that in a, a higher capacity. Um, I'm not sure that in this particular case, that impact is, uh, you know, totally attributable to this development, but of course more traffic with or without this development is, is coming. Um, extending south to Rankin and 20, uh, that area is seeing some momentum build, uh, from a financial perspective and that, and that's happening through, uh, Congresswoman Underwood's office and, uh, federal process that's going on right now. Uh, that does appear that, uh, we may see some allocation of funds toward uh, establishing a roundabout at that location. So that's, that's pretty good news. Of course, it's gonna take some time to take shape. And, uh, you know, nothing's ever done until it's done, right? But, um, it's, uh, very encouraging, uh, at this point. Uh, and so I, I do see a future where uh, both of those intersections are addressed and improved from the current condition.
Jeff, um, since we're talking about traffic, um, the intersection of 72 and 47, the report said that's the one that's probably more of a problem than anywhere else. But I don't even know if they took into consideration the new mobile, mobile that's going in there with all the in and outs they got and any other future developments coming up down the roads. What do you think?
I'd like to defer over to our, uh, engineer, if you might be able to say some of that, uh, the traffic report, uh, in terms of its detail. You know, we were kind of left to the, the village engineer to look through. Um, I don't know, Mick, would you be able to address that or?
Sure, sure, Jeff. Um, you know, the, the, the traffic analysis does in fact take a look at, you know, the impact from the development as well as what's called background growth. Um, and that background growth is typically, you know, a, a percentage or, oh, that is established or agreed upon and that's used to, to address whether it's that mobile or whether it's a, additional commercial development that happens in those vicinity. So those, those factors are, whereas they aren't actually defined because it's uncertain, other than for example, that mobile, what's gonna all build in that intersection. But the traffic, you know, the approach to that will include what they call background growth. And so we're working through that issue and we, as you saw, we have some questions that we're asking on that traffic report. And then, and we'll work through those with, with the developer as well as K dot and I dot.
Well, one thing I will say is I noticed that upon development traffic being added at 47 and Big Timber, we're starting to see the big timber leg on the east, the westbound is going over capacity entirely. So obviously it wouldn't surprise me at all if K dot and I dot said that they would have to make some kind of improvement, whether it be a right turn lane or, or whatever to that intersection because it's like, I wanna say it was like 30% over capacity by the time the development's built out. So to me, who knows how long the queues would be or anything like that. So, I mean, everyone knows that 47 is a mess and I dot needs to do something about it, but, you know.
All right, uh, any other commissioners have comments or questions still to go, uh?
I, I have one question. When you're, uh, connecting Andrew to ranking, would there have to be traffic signals there at some point? Because of the traffic from Caroline coming out?
Jeff, like, we, we'll, we'll be looking at that through those traffic analysis. Um, there's, there's things called warrant analysis that need to be met in order to justify a signal. Uh, at this time, I, I don't see anything in those reports that suggest that the warrants are met. Um, but we'll continue to look through that as we get di- dig deeper into that traffic analysis.
Okay.
Okay, last call. All right, at this time then, I think we're ready to proceed into the time for public comments. Um, I know that, uh, we received some through email or the like, so, uh, I'll ask Village Manager, uh, Jeff Cook to kind of lead us through those and get them into the record then.
True thing, and we did receive a number of, uh, written comments that I'll read for the record here. Uh, this may take some time. Um, and once I've completed that, then we'll go over to the public side. I see we've got one person already with their hand raised. So as, as soon as I finish this up here, um, we'll go over to the public side and start listening to public comments.
Thank you.
Hmm, so the, the, the first, uh, written comment I have here was, uh, submitted by Tori and Sharon, uh, Germanco. Uh, and they say, "I'm writing to express my absolute opposition to D R Horton's proposed residential development for the 286 acres commonly known as Burnage and Vinci Properties. I live on Americana Avenue and my property is immediately adjacent to the proposed development plan. I find the minimal green space between Caroline and their development to be unacceptable at best. In my opinion, the D R Horton proposal is detrimental to Pingree Grove and most specifically to those of us living at the Caroline at Cambridge Lakes neighborhoods. I'm completely opposed to so many multifamily homes, especially when they are joining our quiet retirement community. In addition, their proposal now contains rental properties which will certainly adversely impact the desirability of our community. This proposal does nothing to enhance the community of Pingree Grove, but instead will increase density, noise, traffic, safety problems, exacerbate schools that are already over capacity, destroy local wildlife habitat, and due to the addition of 150 small lot professionally managed rental properties, most certainly will lower our, uh, property values. Traffic and safety are major areas of concern. Uh, traffic jams through the development will only have ingress, egress routes to Big Timber, which will undoubtedly become very busy thoroughfares. While the traffic initially may be lighter on average, the local neighborhood traffic will disproportionately surge during morning and evening rush hours. The traffic surge during morning rush hours will also negatively impact safety for our children. Schools in the area are already reportedly at overcapacity. Our zoning council should not approve rental dwellings that creates an additional burden on an already stressed condition. Wildlife is frequently observed in the area and any development will destroy their habitat. Any planned development of the property should consider the continuing impact to local wildlife habitat. Property values are likely to decrease if we increase density by approving our rental community within this development. These rental properties will do nothing to enhance the desirability of Pingree Grove. At a minimum, please consider the following adjustments before allowing D R Horton to proceed with any development of this acreage. One, eliminate all forms of rental property. Two, vastly increase the separation between the entire Caroline border and the Burnage development by including a water retention feature, berm, or as a last resort, a fence along the entire Caroline Burnage development perimeter. Three, require D R Horton to resolve or at least discuss in good faith all open issues between themselves and Pingree Grove communities. Four, relocate the walking path away from the Caroline community. Five, maintain the existing wooded areas for wildlife. Six, fully document that all maintenance costs associated with any of the above will be the responsibility of the new development and not Pingree Grove or Caroline. Seven, consider changing the scope of this development to that of a step up development. We have enough basic cookie cutter homes. I urge you to disapprove the D R Horton proposal development plan. The plan does nothing to enhance our community based upon recent discussions with my neighbors. I know these opinions are shared by many. Send D R H back to the drawing table. Uh, thank you for your continued service and support of Pingree Grove. Uh, signed Tori and Sharon Germanco. Uh, the next written comment I have is from uh, Dan, Daniel, uh, Farrick. And Dan Farrick is writing as co-chairman, uh, of the Caroline Civic Connection Committee, uh, which he notes is not affiliated with the Caroline HOA. Um, the Caroline Civic Connection Committee would ask the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Village Board of Pingree Grove to take into strong consideration the following issues regarding D R Horton's proposed plans for Cambridge Lakes North. the following issues regarding D R Horton's proposed plans for Cambridge Lakes North. We are a private community, want to prevent excessive automobile and foot traffic from coming into our community and to prevent the use of Caroline amenities by residents of Cambridge Lakes North. We therefore request the following changes to the plans. One, that there be a six to eight foot high berm with trees, bushes and a fence that will separate Caroline property from all adjoining Cambridge Lakes North property. This berm should be similar to the berm that currently separates Caroline Homes from Ranking Road. Two, that all of the existing trees and landscaping that back up to Americana Avenue in section A fifteen in the northwest corner and Cannon Drive in section A sixteen in the northeast corner be retained. Many of the homeowners on Americana Avenue and Cannon Drive paid premium lot fees because they backed up to the trees. Also, it should be noted that a great variety of wildlife reside in this wooded area west of A fifteen, including a great horned owl, sandhill cranes, foxes, deer, coyotes and many songbirds. Three, that all construction traffic will be limited to the new development and not utilize roads in the Caroline community. Some subpoints here, signage should be posted at the entrances to Caroline and at the point where Americana Avenue and Ryan King Road intersect. Another subpoint, should any construction traffic utilize Caroline Road or Caroline Roads? D R Horton should assume the responsibility and cost to correct any damage done by the construction traffic to Caroline streets, curbs, parkways and lots. Four, that sections of Cambridge Lakes North that are adjacent to the Caroline property be age restricted and limited to residents that are age fifty-five and up. Five, that the sections of Cambridge Lakes North that are adjacent to the Caroline property not include rental properties. The third email written comments that I've received here is from John Dittsworth. He says, good evening, village trustees and dear Horton and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. A few comments concerning tonight's proposed development meeting. As America's builder, please consider minimally impacting existing residents and enhancing Pinger Grove rather than just looking at profit. Dense, cheap housing provides no benefit to the community. The opening of Ranking Road will create addition additional traffic noise to the entire western end of the senior Caroline community. A taller, wider berm with landscaping on both sides of the fence should be installed to minimize the additional nuisance. A tree lined Ranking Road would enhance the community's charm while providing some protection for homes that are close to the road without an inclined berm. Spruce pine hardwood trees and strategically placed boulders would also act as a barrier. Note, years ago, a car went over a berm and into a Dell Webb home. Western end of the Caroline community is fenced, restricting outside access and providing our seniors some level of protection. The western end of Americana Avenue, the emergency entrance, currently has an easily breachable gate that defeats the fence's purpose. Community should have a roller pivot cantilever type fence that would help prevent crime and discourage non-residents from taking advantage of the senior residents. And then low cost examples suggests to use Google search and search roller fence gate images. And an image of a wooden fence is it was included with that email. The next item I have of written comments is from Karen Ernst. Says, hello, I'm Karen Ernst and my husband Bob, and we live at ten ninety-five Prescott Lane in Pingry Grove. We are extremely unhappy with the plans presented by Horton for the new development they wish to build. Below is a list of some of our concerns. I am sure there will be more. We're looking forward to the village holding a public hearing as well as an informational meeting at our clubhouse so we can hear more information, particularly since Caroline is the only area affected by this. Oh, and on page two of the plans land use exhibit, we don't understand why Caroline is referred to as Cambridge Lakes North. Point one, the development is way too dense for the land. Homes are too close together and would be way too populous, not enough open area for the projected number of occupants. There is definitely not sufficient parking in the Central Park area with the pool, et cetera, for the number of proposed units, one thousand and seven. And how do you get to the East Park? There is no entrance shown on the plans. Point two, the extension of Ranking Road, which would begin in phase one, is not what we were told would happen when we bought in Caroline. Horton sales agent said that Ranking was not scheduled to be extended ever, indicating flat outline. Horton has lied to us about several things, this being the most blatant, and we do not trust them. We have also heard that the current Horton salespeople have told buyers in Parkside that they can use our facilities. Ranking is just over the fence from our backyard. This means that we would be subjected to construction traffic for how long? Years? And construction starts at seven AM? No. How about beginning truck construction off of Big Timber? Point three, where is the protection for Caroline residents? We are supposed to be a gated community. What is to keep cyclists and walkers from passing through our part property or trying to use our facilities? As we stated, the Horton salespeople for Parkside have already told buyers that they can use our pool, et cetera. In summary, we are totally opposed to the proposed development. Following signature, there is an additional comment added. There's in addition, I slash we am and are concerned about what kind of housing will be there. There's no indication of the size of homes, whether any will have basements, nor the approximate price of homes. These are things that would affect the value of our home. And I would like some clarification on these points. There's not enough separation where the new development property borders Caroline property. At least a six to eight foot berm and fence would be preferable to the current plans. We do not want construction traffic on Ryan King off of Andrew. The traffic will be horrible. Why can't they begin off of Big Timber? The next written comments I have is from Kim Heiss. And Kim states, I'm looking forward to the Zoom meeting tomorrow evening regarding the D R Horton proposal. Like so many others, I'm very concerned about the impact on Caroline at Cambridge Lakes. We're such a wonderful community here that it's hard to contemplate another large community at our borders. I'm very concerned about the intersection of Americana Avenue and Ryan King Road. We currently have an emergency gate, but would love to see some kind of movable full fence to try to eliminate foot traffic. I understand there will be a berm in certain areas, which is helpful. But could there possibly be fences on the berms? Dell Webb's Edgewater, a gated community in Elgin, has fencing on all the berms, which looks great and helps discourage any foot traffic. Thank you all. Signed, Kim Heiss. The next written comment received is from John Urbanback. And this comment says, we think that a wooden or steel sliding gate with remote control should be used to close off the cul-de-sac at the end of Americana Avenue at Ranking Road. The next written comment is from Kevin and Becky Monahan. Hope I got that right. This letter is to express my direct opposition to what has been submitted by D R Horton for development of the Burnage property with over one thousand planned mixed type home sites. I am a homeowner in the Caroline community who lives on Americana Avenue and am deeply concerned with how close these proposed home sites are to our property. This applies to both Americana Avenue and Cannon Drive. Caroline of Cambridge Lakes is a private gated retirement community with open space design criteria, which includes no fences and no outdoor sheds. The single family two story homes that D R Horton is currently building allows homeowners to have both fences and outdoor sheds as seen from the new homes being constructed north of Route seventy-two to Pinger Grove. Additionally, it has come to my attention that the quad type homes proposed north of Americana Avenue might be rental property. If this is true, this is unacceptable from my viewpoint. This will do nothing to help improve the desirability of living in Pinger Grove. Rental properties bring another whole set of issues to deal with going forward. The other area of concern is the existing forest of issues is the existing forest of issues to of trees directly west of the proposed neighborhood A fifteen. This forest of trees is home to a variety of wildlife that reside in this wooded area to include a great horned owl, sand cranes, foxes, deer, coyote and many song birds. From what is shown on dear Horton's plan, more than fifty percent of these trees will be cut down. The tree line starts where Prescott Lane intersects with Americana Avenue. It goes out about two hundred and fifty feet, then west to the proposed Austin Boulevard and then new development. Cutting down any of these trees will impact the wildlife that resides in this forest of trees. To help satisfy both parties, I would suggest the following to move new home construction further away from Caroline of Cambridge Lakes. This would benefit most all homeowners on Americana Avenue and Cannon Court while enhancing the beautification of the overall site plan. Increase the overall size of the detention basin between A fifteen and A sixteen. Reference my attached sketch from the previous D R Horton proposal back in January twenty twenty-one. Included with this email was the January plan that was presented that had a different orientation and layout of some of the of the properties. Extend the basin to the west to the existing tree line near A fifteen and Prescott Lane, removing one row of quad type homes parallel to Americana Avenue. To the east, extend the basin to the fifty foot wide emergency outlet near the roundabout in Caroline. This would eliminate X number of single family homes planned on Plateau Drive. It would also allow the Caroline homeowners on Cannon Drive to not see the back of homes with possible fences and outdoor sheds. They would instead have more separation from new homes being constructed and also looking at the front of these homes, which is more aesthetically pleasing. Additionally, the proposed new berms, landscaping and possibly new fencing have to be considered also. The above mentioned recommendations have been discussed with many of my neighbors here in Caroline on both Americana Avenue and Cannon Drive, and all are in agreement. We're hoping that you can disapprove of the latest proposal submitted by D R Horton and give these suggested revisions consideration going forward. Respectfully signed, Kevin and Becky Monahan. I got two left here. The next written comment is from Jake Killinger. And Jake states, in accordance with the instruction provided on the agenda, I'm submitting my comments for consideration in advance of the meeting. One, I am strongly opposed to any rental property proposed for inclusion due to the transitory nature and associated crime with such properties. The proposal shows these rentals in close proximity to the existing Caroline community with easy access into and out of that community. Caroline community consists mostly of fifty-five and over residents that want little crime, little to no crime in their age restricted community. Please consider consulting with our police department and others in reviewing crime statistics from the multifamily units in other parts of Pinger Grove. I am certain you will find the majority of reported incidents are from such properties. Two, Caroline was sold to residents as a gated and restricted access community. The proposal only contains a berm to separate and isolate the Caroline community. The gate at the end of Americana Avenue should be upgraded for security purposes. In addition to a berm, a more secure fence should also be included. Boulder Ridge in Algonquin is surrounded by a fence, which should be considered as a model of restricted access community. This this is not just a matter of privacy, but also community safety. Expense for such improvements should be borne by D R Horton, touted as America's number one builder and not the Caroline HOA. We already have far too many trespassers in our community. Three, we have heard and read from past board meeting about how the village is at capacity for water and sewer and other infrastructure needs with very little to no funds to pay for upgrades. Adding more residential properties of this scale would only exacerbate the situation. The nation's number one builder should step up to the plate and provide such infrastructure upgrades. Number four, lastly, access roads and widening of the surrounding two lane roads, Route forty-seven, Big Timber, et cetera, should proceed in conjunction with or prior to this proposal. Traffic congestion is not that far off. The next written comment was provided by Jennifer Saga. After reviewing the plans for the proposed new development and attending multiple village board meetings, my comments related to the workshop discussion are as follows. First bullet, improvements definitively cutting off motor vehicle traffic to the unimproved portion of Ranking Road are sorely needed. However, due to the very low traffic on this portion of Ranking, the road is also a prime route for scenic walk or cycling ride as well as provides non-car dependent access to Go Birds, a local business. Moving forward with improvements on Ryan King, please maintain the ability of residents to continue to access this unimproved portion of the road by foot or via human powered transport. The second bullet, the community as a whole would benefit from further expansion of multi-use paths, which are inclusive of cycling, over limiting paths to walking as the conceptual plans are labeled at this time, especially paths that encircle water features. Next bullet, paths fully encircling water features or otherwise creating a circuit are more beneficial to walkers, runners and cyclists than partial paths. Next bullet, the East Park will receive more use by residents if connected to the community by a multi-use path, which incorporates the park into the community. The next bullet, where in this new development, where in this new development is there a pavement area in a park amenity for basic outdoor activities such as jumping rope, four square or sidewalk art that does not interfere with motor vehicle traffic or parking, foot traffic or space designed for designated activity? Can we expand or adjust a park amenity in such a way to include this kind of space, which may be more inclusive of a broader range of age groups than courts, fields or pocket parks? Thank you. Signed, Jennifer Saga. And that concludes the written comments submitted for this meeting. I do want to to make mention that the Caroline neighborhood did collect some of their own written handwritten comments and delivered a summary sheet to the village of those as a, you know, kind of as a a method of also enhancing communication on this issue. And so what what I've done is I've summarized the content. There's a little bit of overlap there, but I'll just quickly kind of run through some of this. There were thirty-one individuals listed on the Caroline documents that they submitted to the village, having questions, requests and comments and a couple items that are more village related. Questions asked if this development would be part of Caroline. Will there be a new high school and can the schools handle the influx of students? Will Ranking Road be improved from forty-seven to seventy-two? How soon will Ranking Road be improved next to Caroline? Is the clubhouse planned? Will any new residences be rental? What is the market price of the proposed homes? Some of the requests that were contained in that sheet indicated a desire for increased size of the proposed berm between the new neighborhood and Caroline. There was a technical sort of comment noting that Laguna Lane already exists in Caroline and noting that there is a Laguna Way that's proposed in the new development and suggesting that that should be changed to avoid confusion down the line. Other comments that were provided in that form indicated too much building and no infrastructure. Berms need to be larger to celebrate or to separate the new from Caroline. Keep the multifamily and or rental units on the Big Timber side of the development. Existing emergency access to Caroline is too accessible. There's a desire to have a movable fence of sorts that's been discussed in these other comments we've just read. Suggestion for more high end homes, less quads and townhomes. Concern for additional traffic and the adequacy of the infrastructure. There's concern expressed regarding the premium lot marketing that was purported to occur between D R Horton and Caroline Sales. Concern expressed regarding trespass into the Caroline neighborhood and the potential for crime. A concern for the new residential might impact valuation of existing residential. And there is some concern for monotonous appearances of similar buildings. More on the village side of things, there are a few questions asking about the More on the village side of things, there were a few questions asking about the future of a potential new water tower and what that may mean in terms of rates. There was a request concerning a meeting with Caroline to to add explanation to some of the drawings. For anybody who doesn't know, these boards, these plans have been shared on a poster board format and dropped off at the Caroline Clubhouse as well as the Cambridge Lakes Community Center, and they've been on display for the public for a number of weeks now to try to make sure all the proper information is out and available and accessible. And then lastly, there was a question about the long-term plan to handle increased traffic on Big Timber forty-seven and seventy-two, and I I think we touched on that a little bit during the discussion. So that that concludes the the written comments that the village has received and with with that chairman book, if you'd like me to switch over and see if I can promote the persons that have raised their hand.
And I'll just say that we've exceeded two hours for this meeting and so I think we're on a good pace to finish here shortly, but we definitely want to hear from anybody who's joined via Zoom or telephone then and didn't have a chance to submit ahead of time. So if we can proceed with that, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Well, I have an attendee, Dale Johnson. I'm gonna promote you to the screen here. And Dale, it looks like you're being added. Just unmute yourself and then you should be able to speak.
Okay, I think I'm on mute now, am I?
Yep, we got you, Dale.
Okay, there are numerous open spots here to wonder about here in this presentation. First one I would wonder about is just a kind of humorous comment on the rental units, the fact that Wall Street is putting investment money into this kind of thing, and it would be kind of a long-term prospect of stability. My prospect of stability is I bought a house. I plan to be here for ten, twenty years. That's my sense of long-term stability. Wall Street, but I'm not reassured at all by that because Wall Street's long-term outlook is like a year, maybe two years. There are also the people who brought us the big mortgage fraud debacle of two thousand and eight. So being reassured that Wall Street is behind, that Wall Street money would be behind some of the rental properties is very unreassuring for stability. Second thing is trust is important and being able to trust that somebody will follow through with their commitments is very important. And at the last village meeting discussing this topic, one of the board members pointed out that the Caroline community has a huge deficit in the quality of the roads that DH Horton built and that there is an ongoing dispute with DH Horton. And that speaks to a very big lack of trust. How is this board committee addressing maintaining trust? We've seen this kind of behavior going on with immediately nearby people, the immediate, the HOA right here. I'll let myself to those two comments and that's all I'm adding.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do we have any other public comments from members that are in the audience? Nobody's raising their hands. If you've dialed in, recall that press star nine on your handset to raise your hand. If there's no further comments here. There we go. Have a looks like Mr. Johnson has raised his hand once again.
I'll toss him out. One more comment, just to reiterate what some people have already said here tonight, several of the village commissioners have said. I understand that it's an obstacle to bring the construction work in from Big Timber Road, which is why Gage Horton does not want to put the road in initially and wants to put a lot of traffic in noise of the construction crews going through on Ranking. But if it's important to avoid that cost, it's also important to avoid the cost of property value devaluation from the noise and the construction activity on that road. I guess, you know, from Gage Horton's viewpoint, you know, the noise does not matter because it's not their property. So that's not reassuring to have this done right. It should be built through Ranking Road, through Big Timber with an access through there and minimal traffic added for construction. End of my comment.
Thank you, Dale. Looks like we have Kristin Lehman. I'm gonna promote you to panelist here. Okay, you've joined as panelists. Please unmute and you can go ahead and speak. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So just really quick, I know this was touched on in some of the other comments, but I would just request that we consider calling this development something other than Cambridge Lakes to eliminate the confusion. It doesn't seem to be connected to what we know currently as Cambridge Lakes, so I would love to see us come up with another name for the development just to avoid confusion later on.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further public comments? It was just a second. Last call for public comments. The chairman book, nobody is raising their hand on the Zoom platform at this point.
Okay, well, thank you for managing the console there, keeping the, you know, that's part of the meeting live for all of us. Appreciate that. I guess ask the commissioners for one last thought if they want to make it. And then we'll just end this discussion and this workshop. I personally feel it's been very successful. There's a lot of information that the that the builder provided to all of us. It's been made available on our village website. There's a lot to go through. Staff spent many hours as, you know, on our behalf, going through and preparing the information that is provided to us. The points that were brought out in the discussion tonight were all important and and it was nice having DR Horton representatives here to kind of guide us through their thoughts on some of these things and and their receptiveness to listen to some of the things that were brought forward. So I appreciate all that, but those are my comments. Any commissioner wish to make a quick statement and then we'll conclude? All right, I guess we're we're done with this part of the workshop then, in this discussion. Let's, let's just bring up any older new business for us to go over and that those two categories. I think everybody's had enough meeting here for this evening. All right, well then, can somebody make a motion that we adjourn for the evening and I'll just remind everybody that this this whole topic will come up again, that there will be a public hearing out in the future sometime. In the meantime, we can keep looking at some of the detailed information that was provided to us and, you know, maybe more things will rattle around in our brains before then.
If I could just say, just really quickly, I appreciate everybody's time. Certainly went through a lot, got a lot of comments here, a lot of things. We got feedback both from public and commissioners. I'd like to echo your statement, thanking staff for the work that they've done so far. Again, we'll continue to work with staff as we always have to work through to find the the best way forward on this one. So again, thank everybody for their time and look forward to continuing to working with you all.
Thank you. Okay, still looking for that motion to adjourn then?
Still moved.
All right, Stephen, would you mind doing the final roll call then on this?
All right, Commissioner DeSally?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Schlesman? Believe you are mute, Commissioner?
Ate ya.
Hi.
Thank you. Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Eckert?
Yes.
Chairperson Buck?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you all. Have a good rest of your evening. This meeting is adjourned.